Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilman Williams, would you do the invocation, please?
Let us pray. Oh heavenly Father, bless us as we about to take care of the city business. Bless all the leaders and the citizens, oh heavenly Father, that we will make decisions in the best will of the city, oh heavenly Father. Bless the sick and the shudding, oh heavenly Father, and that anybody who needs some prayer, give a special prayer that you put your healing hands on them, oh heavenly Father. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Williams. All right. Tonight also be, Council Clerk will not be with us, so I'll be participating in that role. So now we'll have the roll call. Councilwoman Eason.
Present.
Councilman Harry.
Here.
Councilwoman Smallwood. Okay. Councilwoman Wilson.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Here.
And Councilwoman Jones is here, all right? That is, six present. All right. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move, adopt the agenda.
Councilman Williams, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Eason. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote for the agenda. Councilwoman Eason?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
No.
Right. Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jones, yes. Okay, there are five yeses and one no. All right, tonight's meeting pertains legislation. Is an ordinance 06, 2021, an emergency ordinance to provide for the continuity of operations in the administration of the city's financial affairs, and specifically, the issuance of checks during the absence of the city treasurer. Is there a motion to accept the ordinance 06, 2021?
Madam, you need to accept it as an emergency ordinance.
I'm sorry, we have to do that first. All right. All right. Is there a motion to accept this as an emergency ordinance?
So move, Madam Chair, accept it as an emergency ordinance.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Yes, a second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Eason. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take. I'll take the vote. Councilwoman Eason, does it say it's an emergency ordinance?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
No.
Councilwoman Wilson?
No.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones, yes. One, two, three, that's four yeses and two noes.
Madam, Madam President.
Councilman Williams.
I move that we accept the ordinance as our first reading of a regular ordinance. Make the motion to put on the floor the first reading as a regular one.
First reading as a regular ordinance? All right. Is there a second to Mr. Williams' motion?
A second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Eason. All right, I've seen that Councilwoman Smallwood has joined us. We'll take the role for this, to accept this as a first reading. Councilwoman Eason?
Um, the legislation hasn't been read.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, I'm sorry. All right, ordinance number 06, 2021. Sponsor, Council President Robin Jones. Co-sponsor at the request of the administration. Public hearing session is a special regular session. Date of introduction is March 16th, 2021, and I guess I'll put in parentheses next to that is first reading. All right, an emergency ordinance to provide for the for continuity of operations in the administration of the city's financial affairs, and specifically, the issuance of checks during the absence of the city treasurer. Whereas the city charter is silent as to the manner in which the city checks may be issued when the treasurer is unavailable. And whereas to situations where no express procedures exist, Section 602B of the Charter provides in pertinent part that all powers of the city shall be exercised in the manner prescribed by this charter, or if the manner is not prescribed, that in such manner as may be prescribed by ordinance. And whereas pursuant to Charter Section 602, 21 of the Charter, the council has the express power to provide for the general management and control of the finances of the city. And whereas the treasurer, treasurer's authority to sign checks is subordinate to the councils pursuant to Charter Sections 802B. And whereas Charter Section 308E provides an emergency ordinance may be approved on the dates date certain, and whereas the current city treasurer has been suspended until 45 days. I don't have that, I'm sorry, I don't have the date, I have to put that in there. And thereafter, subject potentially to removal. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in this regular session of the 16th day of March 21, that all checks issued in payment of salaries or municipal obligations shall be issued and signed by the mayor, Council President Robin Jones, existing designated council member, and Council Vice President Angela Ferguson. Council members temporarily designate pursuant to ordinance. Be it further resolved and ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden that this emergency ordinance is and shall become effective upon the same date as passage. And further, that is, that it is hereby rescinded one day after the date of a date a city treasurer is appointed by the mayor and approved by the council to undertake the responsibilities of that office, including the signing of checks. So at this point, do we take discussion on this ordinance, or?
I move that it be, that be put in the record as a first reading. It'll need a discussion as a first reading, it's been read.
All right. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilwoman, I mean, Councilwoman Eason. All right. All right, we'll take the vote. Councilwoman Eason?
Um, I have a question.
Councilwoman Eason?
On line number 39, it says all checks issued in payment of salaries or other municipal obligations shall be issued, and I understand it would be signed by the mayor, council president, and vice president. However, are you all looking at a temporary treasurer to actually issue the checks, or are you looking at the current staff?
Current staff can issue checks, can cut checks. Is that what you're pertaining, is that what you're asking Councilwoman Eason, if the current staff can cut checks, or will they be?
Yes. And then also, was this ordinance reviewed by the city attorney?
The ordinance was done by the attorney. They were the ones that suggested doing this, to have something in writing other than to have administration just up, because Councilwoman Ferguson is already a signatory on the, on the checks. She could sign the checks, but the attorney suggested, recommended that we put this in writing so that there wouldn't be any thought of something going on in the finance office that maybe should, that probably wouldn't happen, but they just wanted to protect the city and protect the employees.
Okay, and another question I have is, line 33 where it says the current city treasurer has been suspended to whatever the date is. Has his account been temporarily suspended as well? Because he may have a remote access to that financial system. Has that been temporarily suspended?
Mr. George?
Yes, ma'am. I verified with T-Spec today that all of his access to his the server, his email, and the VPN access he was using to access the bill of system has been suspended.
Okay, and that includes the access to the, that system, the financial system? Because I'm thinking there may be a way, because I know like, there may be other ways without going through the city where you can actually access the system directly, remotely. I mean, that, I'm just going by my technical experience. I don't know if that system was set up where he could only access it through the city VPN, or there was another way where he can go through that system, like going to your, your bank account directly to access it.
My understanding, talking to the finance staff as well as T-Spec, is that this system is not accessible through the cloud. So he was VPN accessing into his computer in the office and accessing the system through his computer. We have since suspended that VPN access.
Okay, thank you.
Council President, I have a question.
Councilwoman Smallwood?
Who's verifying whether or not there is money in each of these departments before the checks are cut?
Mr. George?
Well, that will be a combination of myself and, and Shirley will be doing that as well, because she has access to the bill of system. And we are bringing on a temporary treasurer to act in the position to help process bills, payroll, and AP, and he will be able to work with Shirley to get into the bill of system to verify the balance in all the accounts before any checks are cut.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Are there any other questions? All right, we'll take a vote for the first reading. Councilwoman Eason?
Just, actually, I have, this is just a process question I'm thinking about. Since all legislation has to go through a public hearing, this is superseding that? Like the legislation we had to do for the election board?
Yes, but not on the same basis, but just because this is dealing with the finances in the city. Yes, this is an emergency.
Okay. What, the lawyer reviewed everything and he said that this could be done, then I would say yes.
All right. Mr. Harry?
I'm gonna say no, because you don't need a motion for a first reading. You didn't get the votes for an emergency ordinance, so it automatically becomes a first reading, so no.
Thank you, Mr. Harry. Think I'll continue on just to get a consensus anyway. Councilwoman Smallwood?
No.
Councilwoman Wilson?
No.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jones is a yes. All right, so this will All right, that concludes the legislation. The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Mr. Richard Aurora Montgomery?
Yes, good evening, Councilwoman, Council members. So question, so in layman's terms, so that us citizens can understand what's going on. Can someone please explain? Well, I guess we've already found out that the, the city treasurer, I guess, was suspended. Can somebody please explain to us what this process is now? Why is this considered a first reading? Why is it not, I guess, not being voted on? And does this require five votes to pass? And if it does not obtain the five votes, then what happens to that position of treasurer and who would manage the city's money?
Okay, from my understanding, this is the first for me in doing this, but this is an emergency ordinance, and emergency ordinance requires five votes from the council to pass it as an emergency. If they had, if it had been passed as an emergency, then it would only require four votes to, to pass it into, to have it done. Like you said, the city treasurer has been suspended. There, in writing, in signing checks, it is set up, whereas the, the treasurer signs a check, the mayor signs a check, and the council president signs a check as a checks and balances. In this case, that the city manager is no longer, is on suspension, that
Minus the treasurer.
I'm sorry, the city treasurer is suspended, it's on suspension. The council vice president is already a signatory. We've already, when we first came in as president and vice president, we had to send documents to the bank, letting them know that who was going to be the new signatories on the check. So the council vice president is already a signatory, so this resolution, I mean, ordinance was, was wanting to be put into place so that she could sign the checks in the absence of a treasurer. And when the treasurer comes on board, a new treasurer or a treasurer, then she would be, would not have to do this again. And the attorney felt it was best to go ahead and put this in writing so that no one would think that there was anything other going on, other than we wanted Councilwoman Ferguson to sign the checks, because the checks require three signatures.
So by, so by this ordinance not passing at this time, we don't have the three persons to sign?
No, we don't.
Which means what, the city of, the business of the city in terms of finances just halts?
It's not gonna halt, but it slows the process down. I mean, because when it was first presented to me, the city manager, Mr. George, thought that, you know, because Ms. Ferguson was already a signatory, that, you know, we would just let her go ahead and sign checks, but the attorney felt like we should just bring it before the council and let them know, and in addition to letting them know, have something concrete in writing to, for them to understand, for all of us to understand, council members and citizens, what it is that we're doing.
Okay, so I, I guess we're at the beck and call of the three council members that voted no on this in order for this to pass. Because we just need one of them to vote yes, so that, that basically the business of the city can go forward without interruption at this time. And if that doesn't happen, then that's it.
Some to that.
Yeah, okay. Once again, thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Aurora. Any other citizens' comments? Ms. Farid?
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, um, can you please explain what then happens if you don't have the three signatories? Does that mean if there's an attempt to spend over a certain amount that can't happen, or? What, what does it mean?
Mr. George, would you expound on that, please?
Thank you.
Well, what it means is that we, we can't sign any checks. We cannot process any payments of any kind regardless of the amount until we have three signatories on the check. So at this point, we'll just have to hold what we have in the, in the accounting office until this comes back to the council for a second reading, and we can have another vote on this issue.
Okay, is it possible for the council members who voted against it to explain what additional information they would need to support it, or what your rationale is for not supporting it? I'm sure it's not, I'm sure you're not just intending to stop the business of the city, so I'm interested to hear the reasons why, especially because this just seems like new news for a lot of us that the treasurer was even suspended. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Any more citizens' questions, or, I'm sorry, are there any council members that would like to, that didn't vote for this, would they like to respond to Ms. Farid? Hearing none, we'll move on. Any council, I'm sorry, any more citizens' comments? Mr. Curtis?
So, a little bit disappointed that that last question wasn't answered. I feel like we should be able to get answers from our city council as it relates to the business of the city, and I mean, I'm, I'm just a little bit all the way confused about everything. So I have a question, I don't know if it's gonna get answered. What, what's next? Because it sounds like we're just holding up the business. There's no explanation of why we're holding up the business. At this point, it's just holding up because we want to hold it up without an explanation. And a concerned citizen is asking for, I don't think it's too much, since everyone is at large, to respond to a, you know, a citizen's comment. So I'm really confused with that. So it's making me uneasy about the whole situation. So what else are we not being made aware of? So that was what, the prior question, but now the next question is, what's next? So it has to be a second reading, I gather, it has to be a second reading. When will that second reading take place? When will this bottleneck be untangled so the business of the city can continue to move forward?
Madam President?
Councilman Williams?
Mr. Curtis, the second reading can, can take place in six days.
And after the second reading, then you vote on that day to?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments?
This, Mr. Beck, Madam President?
Mr. Beck?
Yeah, I just have a major concern. We're embarking on an election, and this may seriously impact our ability to carry that through. If we're unable to get to, if the city's unable to process payment to vendors at this point. I'd like to know what contingency plan we have in place versus waiting six days for this to come to another vote. Thank you.
Mr. George?
I don't, I don't know that there is a contingency plan. The charter is very clear on how checks need to be processed and, and paid. And there's really no, there's no way around it that I know of. I can check with the lawyers and review the charter one more time to see if there's another way to make that payment, but if the payment needs to be made by check, we can't do it until after, I guess, the earliest would be the 22nd, when there's another meeting on this issue. So, so for the next week, we would, we would not be able to process any payments.
Well, can we do credit card? Does that, does it have the ability to electronic or credit card payment?
We need to, I need to double check, because the charter does specify who has to approve credit card checks, and it's very similar to a check, so let me check the charter, and then if necessary, I'll run it by the attorney to see whether or not we can do a credit card payment. We've never had this situation come up, so let me double check that before I give you a definitive answer.
I appreciate it. And one, one more question, Tim. And, and also, could you check with the attorney as to what provisions we may have to enact, because if this causes a delay to our ability to hold an election, you know, this dovetails into that, so we may have to, I don't know, have another resolution, that question, what the process would be. But it's gonna, this would have serious impact on our ability to carry out our duties.
Yes, sir, I can certainly reach out to Kevin tomorrow.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Can I, can I follow up on that?
Mr. Kurt?
Okay, so does this also affect city employees getting paid? I know some people may have the I know some people may have direct deposit, and some people may get checks, but does this impact that at all?
I think they're using an ADP system to process checks for employees. I don't, I'm not
So it's not the same?
No.
So you don't think that?
Ms. Schultz is on here as the human resource, she Ms. Schultz?
Um, if I'm, hold on a minute, please. If I'm not mistaken, we have one employee, and I have to double check with finance tomorrow. But if I'm not mistaken, we have one employee that receives a paper check. Let me double check tomorrow on that. And we, excuse me, we are, our next payday is a week from Friday. So if this is resolved next week, then the answer is no, it's not going to affect any pay. If it is, then I have to double check.
And I just wanted to try it one more time. There's no malicious intent, especially on my part. I really just truly want to understand the rationale behind the three noes. I mean, there's no judgment, but can one of the three people just help me to understand uh, the process of, okay, why is this not a good idea? Because I'm open to hear that, to understand, and I just left at a loss right now. I'm asked, please, can one of the three, or all three, explain it, just so I can understand?
Okay, Councilman Herring, or Councilwoman Smallwood, or Councilwoman Wilson? Would you like to answer the citizens' question?
Or at least not ignore me? You could say no. I'd rather have that as opposed to just completely ignore me? And Ms. Farid? I thought I would try one more time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other citizens' comments? Let me make sure, okay. Mr. Aurora Montgomery again?
Yeah, so, once again, and I'm just, I'm just piggybacking off of what Mr. Curtis just said. So, the silence of three council members who voted no with no explanation to the citizens whatsoever, knowing that these no votes basically hold up the business of the city for the next seven days and not, and not even providing any kind of explanation to the citizens. I mean, it just, it just makes me feel as though there's, there's some scheme to sabotage the ongoing business and even perhaps the election. So I mean, I, I think as citizens, we're due an explanation. Um, I mean, there's, I see absolutely no reason why we have to go through this. I mean, we're in a, we're in a situation, and I think these three council members know that. And for that very reason, they're holding things up, because to me, it sounds like it's being done purposely. You know, and that shouldn't be the way we conduct business in this city. You know, and, and again, I'm gonna echo what Mr. Curtis asked for and Ms. Farid asked for an explanation. But I'm gonna go as far as calling out Mr. Herring or Ms. Smallwood and Ms. Wilson and asking each of them to give us an explanation, not, and not ask, but we are requesting an explanation. You are our voted officials, you are our elected officials, and we are now demanding a response from the three of you as to why you voted no. Because you're holding up the business of the city. I would like a response, please. Mr. Herring, would you go first? Hearing none, Ms. Wilson, will you go second? I mean, I think the three of you are just being rude right now. You're being rude to the citizens. We are asking for a response, and you are completely ignoring us. Ms. Smallwood, would you like to take a turn at it? Citizens, note, these are, these are city officials who are ignoring our requests. Please take note of this, uh, citizens. Keep in mind, we have an election coming up on May third.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just one more question, I just have more questions as you go along. So in the second reading, and again, I'm honestly just trying to understand just this whole process as a citizen. For the second reading, you have a vote. Will you need five votes then, or will you just need four?
Four.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But their actions hold up our process, Mr. Curtis, by seven days.
Okay.
All right, are there any other citizens' comments? All right, hearing none, it is now seven thirty six. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.